Go ahead and call our meeting to order. It's nice to see everyone here tonight and appreciate your being here. We just got through with a very good informational meeting about the upcoming repaving of 20th Street. So, we're counting on our newspaper and our Facebook page and various ways that we'll be getting that information out to the public as that project starts. So, at this time, I'm going to call Councilman Volk, who will offer our prayer and our pledge. Prayer first.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future, and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free republic which sustains, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jack. We've all been given a copy of our agenda, and for anyone who would like a copy, we do have copies back on the podium in the back. At this point in time, I will take a motion to approve or to make any changes to our agenda.
Sound move.
All right, we have a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Our next item is citizen input. Did anybody sign in, Jessica? Do we have anyone who would like to address the council? No? Okay. All right. We've invited a very special guest to come join us tonight. Chad Alexander is the Tiff County Tax Commissioner, and we've asked Chad to come in and give us an update on our tax digest, and he just presented me with my own lovely personal copy of the tax digest for the citizens of Tiff. Would you like to review this? Jack, I'm gonna pass that on down to you.
I'll have to test on that later.
Yeah, exactly. Well, he will pass with black colors, I promise you. Frank and me, maybe not so much, but anyway. Thank you for being here, Chad. I'll just turn the floor over to you.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank y'all for inviting me. I'm gonna have to put on my glasses, because I'm glad as a bat. And I apologize right after this, I do have another meeting I'm gonna have to attend. Basically, this year, for the city, we have billed $3,167,468. That's what we just got through billing. That's what all the bills that went out this year. Last year, just to give y'all a little bit of, between last year and this year, we billed $3,822,000. So, it went up about $78,000 between last year and this year. So, there was an increase in it. It wasn't a millage increase, it was just property increase. And the other side of this point, last year, 15th, 2000, last year's taxes, we are at 97.99% collecting, which is unheard of. It's real good. 2000, that's one year ago. So, in 2014's bills, we're at 99.13. Basically, to put it in perspective, of the $3 million we billed for y'all in '15, we got $61,000 left over. That, a lot of that deals with bankruptcy. You can't touch them, you can't bill them, there's some issue with them, they're uncollected. So, we're very good. In '14's bills, we got $26,000 left. So, that's very good. I did, I was trying to get some other information that, uh, that I thought may be prevalent to what y'all needed today. Taxable property in Tiff, Tifton, City of Tifton, the total 100% value is $898,959,608 worth of billable property in Tifton. Now, that does include personal and real. So, that, that's, to get just the actual property in the City of Tifton, we'd have to do some other steps, and we, I didn't have time to get it today. Last year, it was $877,984,525. So, there is, it's going the right way, is kind of where I'm going with this. And I'm trying to think if anything else.
And we take 40%.
And the 40% is billable, is taxable. So, you got the 100%, then you multiply times 40%, that becomes your taxable.
Assess value.
Assess value. Then you take your millage rate, multiply times your millage rate, or take any exemptions, and then that's what brings us to the billing that I just, we just.
That's 3.1 million plus.
Right, right. So, we're, I mean, it's going in the, and I want to give you a comparative between '16, '15, and actually, I got '16, '15, and '14. So, and I gave you those, it's still steadily growing. So, I kind of want to let you know kind of where we were at with our billing, our collection. Our collections are outstanding right now. So, is there any questions? I mean, I know I threw a lot of numbers at you, but there's.
I just want to remind everyone that the City of Tifton does contract with.
Right.
To bill and collect those taxes. We used to do that ourselves.
Right.
But it's much more cost efficient for the city.
Very cost efficient to do. There's other counties, a lot of other counties or cities are going together to do this. Majority of them are financed a lot more cost efficient. You can't hire, usually, if you hire two people, you've already exceeded the cost, and you ain't sent out bill one or got a, or do you have a computer system?
Right.
And then, you start going and competing five ways, and that's one thing you don't ever want to do. With my collection rate, 99, I mean, 98, 99%, that's pretty dang good. And I collect for a city, county, and school. Right. It's, and if you ever, I mean, if you ever need any of these numbers, I run them all the time. We, I try, and I try to do comparative a year, like, last year's bills at that date and this year's bill at this date. So, there's an apples and apples. So.
And the exemptions, you had mentioned exemptions. Want to remind everyone that we have homestead exemption. What other exemption could someone claim to save a few dollars off the tax bill?
Actually, I got them right here.
So, you're a citizen.
You got age 65, elderly, disabled, veteran, you got a numerous.
Okay.
That is all done through your tax assessor's office. They do your qualification of what you are and you are not qualified for. You got age 65, 100% disabled vet, unmarried spouse, free port, that deal, free port deals with your personal property taxes. Your inventory, like, if you have a business, your inventory, your equipment, all that. Historic, historic district, I think you got that. Conservation use, that deals with your land. Brownfield, which is, that's.
Yes, different.
Yeah. That's a whole nother, very few actually qualify for the brownstone.
That would be something like the Horizon Mills property or something.
Yes, yeah. But your elderly, your disabled vet and all, those have different amounts also.
Sure.
But it's, uh, the collections are good. They're very good.
Well, I know, anytime that I've ever called Chad or stopped by the office, it's been very, really nice to sit down and either explain things or find information for me. So, we really do appreciate what you do, and I know that it's not the most fun job sometimes, but it's certainly a very important job to run the city and the county and the, and the school system. None of us would be in business if it weren't for that, so.
Well, I've told, I've told the county, the city, and the school. Anytime y'all got a question, my door's open. Come in, we'll pull up what we can, and if you don't like that, we'll see what else we can get for you. So, but it's, uh, I mean, it's an open door, but, you know, as long as the collections are good, should be.
Everybody should be happy.
Right.
Any, any questions, anyone has, Chad, or anything, right now? Okay. I think we're good. Thank you, Chad. I appreciate you coming and giving us that update. And I know you wanted to hang around for a second for that thing we talked about.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do that. You've got a few more minutes.
All right.
If it's okay with the council, I'm gonna kind of rearrange some things that are on our agenda, not, not taking them off or anything, just moving something up so Chad can be here for this. Last, at our last council meeting, we found out some news that was kind of surprising to us, and, you know, one of the really fun things about being in this position is you get to make friends with people, you get to see people and get to know people over the course of time, and it's, it's always great to make friends, but it's really important to this council and to this community to have information on a timely basis, information that's provided in an accurate and appropriate way. And so, at this time, the city wanted to do something to recognize someone who's very special to us, and she has a little deal which makes this really fun. So, I'm going to come down front, and I'm going to ask our friend Latasha to please stand up with me. She's normally on the other side of the camera, but I'm just gonna make sure she's on this side of the camera. And Latasha, we have a little something, something for you. So, get on up here. Get up here. Latasha has been with Tiffany's, how many years has she been? Six years. And she has done a phenomenal job. One of the things that she did during this time was that she got married. We were very happy about that. Congratulations on that. She's been married for a little while now, but she's moved to New York. And so, she is going to be a member of us, and that's very sad for us, because we've been certainly part of our City of Tifton family, done a fabulous job for us. I want to read this proclamation without honoring you. Whereas Latasha Ford has spent the past six years reporting for the Tiffany's Ed on the activities and use in Tifton, and whereas during this time, she has written many articles on the city, reported activities at the city council, and attended countless meetings to ensure that our city's citizens are likely informed, and whereas Latasha's dedicated work recording accurate, thorough, and trustworthy recordings has been greatly appreciated, whereas Latasha has not only been a reporter for the Ed, she's become a friend and a part of our City of Tifton family, and whereas Latasha will be remembered for her hard work and commitment to our community and much more, her warm smile and kind heart. And whereas the City of Tifton is grateful for her leadership and excellent work in our community, we wish her the very best in her future. Now, therefore, I, Julius Smith, on behalf of the City of Tifton, wish Latasha Ford the best in her future, good health and happiness, and hereby commend her for her many years of outstanding service to our community, and witness hereof, I hereby, to set my hand and fix the seal of the City of Tifton as 29th day of August, 2016. We wish you just much success and happiness, and like I said, you've been just a real friend and a part of our family, so you'd like to really get some huge shoes to fill on if you know what I'm sorry, but actually, Latasha.
Well, thank you, guys. It's been an honor and a blessing.
Wow.
And I would wish you.
Well, I would say to all the future of us, so, okay. Do you want to say anything? I know you, you were there when Latasha was hired, right?
Yeah, in fact, I helped hire her, so, she's done a good job. We hired her six years ago at the Gazette, and saw her blossom when she came right out of school, I think, to us.
Yes.
And she's, she's really become a good journalist, and we appreciate everything you've done for the community.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, now, we will get back on track. At this point in time, we are going to be swearing in Kristi Daniels to the library board. Is Kristi here? Oh, there she is, right there. Okay. Do you have the paperwork? Kristi, if you'll join me down front.
We appreciate your volunteering for this position. It takes our volunteers from our community to operate our various boards and commissions that we have in Tifton, and that's what makes it the greatest, because our citizens are so involved. This is for the members, so, now you have to stand here and give this to the agenda. So, I, Kristi Daniels, affirm that I will faithfully and partially perform the duties as a member of the Tifton County Public Library Board at this city, and that I will support and maintain the charter of the city of Tifton, and as well as the Constitution and the laws of the State of Georgia and the United States. I shall attend all meetings of the body to which I have been appointed, unless qualified in compliance. I shall abide by the standards for conflicts of interest adopted by the city council, and the rules of disclosure after the vote there too. Unless disqualified by standards for conflicts of interest, I shall actively discontinue all decisions of the body to which I have been appointed. I shall attend at city expense any training mandated by the State of Georgia. I shall also attend as scheduled any special training arranged by the City of Tifton due to your by far.
I do. Congratulations. You are a member of the library board as well.
Library Foundation.
Library Foundation, I got that mixed up, I'm sorry about that. But thank you so much for your service, and as I worry through, that you'll be working with the National Association of Library and other charities, so we appreciate that very much. So, thank you, thank you for giving the foundation, I got foundation board, I'm sorry about that. Do you have an event coming up, don't you?
We sure do.
The Drifters?
Drifters, September 8th.
Oh, is that what, love?
What time?
What time? And where can we get tickets?
Eight o'clock.
And what time?
Eight o'clock, seven o'clock for dinner.
Seven o'clock for dinner at the Conference Center.
At the UGA Conference Center.
And tickets are how much?
Uh, eighty, eighty dollars and thirty five.
Okay, here we go.
I'm sure you have some with you.
Got some in the car.
Just in case anybody wants something. Our next item on the agenda is something that's also very important, and I'm gonna ask all of our friends with our Alzheimer's Association to please make their way forward. These ladies do an incredible job working with citizens in our community, and if you've ever had a family member who has this disease, you know how scary it can be and frustrating, and it can be a real challenge. So, I know that research and ongoing research is so important. Do you want to take a minute with me and talk about that, and we'll read the proclamation for Alzheimer's Awareness Month?
First of all, thanks for learning about the happiness and the loss of students who have Alzheimer's, and in September, for a couple months. Tifton is special to us. Out of 36 counties that we serve, this is our home base. This is where our office is at, and these are our unincorporated here, next, next to me. Everybody here has been affected by the disease. I'm sure so many of you have too. And Georgia law has estimated that 130,000 people are diagnosed with the disease. It's estimated that there's over 200,000 people who are actually living with the disease who don't have a diagnosis, just because of lack of healthcare, denial, and to see an ability to get to the right opportunity to diagnose. So, y'all, from the Association, we're for people, we want to help them out, caregivers as well. Every single one of us sitting here is infected personally by the disease, and we're just really grateful that we get the awareness out, and really thankful to be in, to be in a city, live in a city that allows us to, yeah, and well, so.
Well, thank you. It's our, it's our privilege to be able to endorse this, and it's, like I said, it's incredibly, and that we recognize it, that we provide the resources and certainly provide the education and ongoing research, and hopefully, all of that consciousness, I'm gonna really hope that it's going to be cured.
And there is. I believe it more than, more than ever.
I would. So, it takes all of us working together today and to make sure that that funding is in place. So, in fact being said, I would like to read this proclamation for Alzheimer's Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive, degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory, thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association is the world's leading voluntary health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research for more than 5 million Americans living with Alzheimer's in the United States, and the people we care for. And whereas the month of September has been chosen in recognition of the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, the researchers who are seeking a cause or causes and cure, and the educational programs and support services for claim by the Alzheimer's Association. Now, therefore, we intend to claim that I, Julius Smith, mayor of City of Tifton, do by here to claim September 2016, as the Alzheimer's Awareness Month, go to purple, and urge our citizens to help us ease the burden for families, individuals, and caregivers as we search for and cure, and witness, where I, like I said, my hand, because we're sealed the seal of the city this year, because it's 29th day of August, 2016. So, thank you. And wear purple, donate. Do you want to talk about the, the walk that's gonna be taking place?
Sure, the hour walk coming up in October, it's October 29th, it's a payback. So, you have to walk through the campus a day for families to come together, remember their loved ones, celebrate their loved ones. It's also one of our biggest fundraisers to help serve the families right here where we live. Most of our money, almost all, would actually stay here within Georgia to help serve families in research. So, one other really quick thing is, you probably seen everywhere, we've got a billboard, you guys had it hanging up. We do have a yard sale this weekend, to do the training, move, lots of vendors signed up, as well as all of downtown Tifton.
Yes.
Could be taking place in the yard sale, and donating proceeds to the association.
Which is, oh, yeah, that's wonderful.
It's huge.
So, we thank all the businesses who were participating in that. So, well, thank you so much, and I look at you, what you did. Here's the proclamation, and everybody, each dollar that go out and spend at the yard sale this time. What time is that starting?
It's gonna be from eight to 12.
Eight to 12.
It's gonna be silent auction as well, I've got a lot of great things that I believe the ladies have dug out. And this will be a research on us.
It is, it is. So, be out there, send the money. All right, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. Our next item on our agenda is the approval of several minutes. We have the June 29th joint city council meeting that we had at the Welcome Center, our August 1st council meeting, and the August 18th workshop and special call meeting. We need to have any changes or anything we need to discuss?
I've got a question.
Okay.
It is to Rob, I think. The minutes, the first ones, are this joint meeting that we had with the county, and it's noted in there, and I heard it, but I wasn't listening as closely as I should have probably, that, that they merged Tiff County EMS with Tiff County Fire and Rescue, Fire Rescue, it's in the minutes. And if we contract with Tiff County for EMS, who do EMS countywide, and now it's merged with Tiff County Fire, which isn't countywide, isn't that a problem for the residents of the City of Tifton?
Undoubtedly. Basically, there is no contract for either EMS four or five. As you all may recall, we talked about that. I don't know how it was that there was never a contract between the county and the city for EMS services. It seems like they started doing it in '75, and that's one of the things that we need to straighten out as well.
Well, how would you do one now if you've got a department that's, that's combined with something that you don't want, because you already have a fire department, and now it's, it's one thing? So, how do the people of the City of Tifton not get charged, if you will, for two, we don't need two fire departments, I don't want to pay for both, and I don't think my constituents want to either?
That, that's the crux of the problem, is that right now, as I see it, you have the joints, you have county providing the services in the city. Really, what should happen is, if we want to, if we want the county to contract for EMS services, certainly, we could do that. And then, of course, then, the other services should be borne by the unincorporated area. EMS services would be shared countywide.
Just makes it a little more difficult, since there is no EMS anymore.
It's something that really people need to put a pencil to and find out, you know, what is it costing for EMS services versus Fire Rescue services, so that the city residents are only paying for those services which are being provided inside the city. And that is something that, you know, I've, I've talked with the county attorney about that. I understand that they're looking at it. So, really, that's something that would both the city and the county need to get together, sit down, put a pencil to it, and make sure that whoever's getting the service is paying for the service, and those who are not, are not.
I mean, it's, as a city resident, and we all have city, I mean, that's, that's an issue.
I want to make sure. I'm reading the same, from the exact spot that you're talking about. Are you on the, you're on the council, the joint city-county council, I mean, joint city-county call meeting? Page two, fourth paragraph, is that, I want to make sure I'm referring, I know exactly.
Discussion was held on how expectations, Mr. Jones mentioned with the development of the Tiff County Fire Rescue, they merged Tiff County EMS with that department.
Right.
So, one department is countywide, got merged with one that's not countywide, and city residents are paying for two fire departments, is what's happening, and that is an issue for all of our constituents.
Certainly, and that is where we really need to take a close look at it. We need to determine exactly what the costs are associated to each service, and then make a determination about how you want, how they want to handle that. I mean, you can create special tax districts, or you can, you know, contract and pay it from a general fund.
Right.
Generally, you create, mostly, you create a special tax district. So, my, my view of it is, we're working through these issues, is that identify the costs of the services that are being provided only to the unincorporated area, and then those, that should be created special tax district, so that the city residents would not be paying for those services just provided to the unincorporated area.
Right.
And that's, that really, and I think we're, we're working through that, and we're gonna, you know, discussing it, but it's gonna take a lot of work to look at the budget, and as you said, Jack, you know, we're gonna have to now extrapolate out EMS, you know, because now it's joint. In the event that we want to, you know, continue to contract with the county for EMS services, we need to make sure that that's all we're paying for.
Because, you know, Chad just said he sent out tax bills, and everybody, when they get the tax bill, they look at the bottom line, versus going back and let's see what, you know, what's county, what's school, what's city, that kind of thing, they just look at them like, taxes are too high, and let's, we need to talk about the details about it, and what you might be paying for that you shouldn't.
Well, as you said, I mean, you don't, the city residents should be paying for two fire departments.
Right. Okay.
We want to go beyond that, though, and look at all services, to make sure we're not paying for other services to be on, get that some fire.
That's right, Frank. Basically, you know, we have other services that the county is providing, such as EMA, mosquito control, E911. Again, those are something that we need, go back, look at our, you know, local agreements. Actually, we really need to contract for those services as well, and then make a determination of the cost of those services, and then determine how much of that should be paid by city residents. And all that, in my mind, needs to be broken out, so you know exactly what you're paying for, because one of the reasons we talked about the supplementary powers act, is that you have, you know, you have to have that contract. And again, you know, you could, you could say that the county would agree to pay for mosquito control hypothetically for $50,000 a year. Well, that would enable the city to go out, and they might find John Doe, who says, I can do it for you for 35, and you can contract with John Doe to do it. So, that's why I think that all those type of services that the county is providing for city residents need to be looked at, see what it's costing, and then make a determination what's most appropriate for the most economic well-being for the city residents.
Well, the reverse is true, too. I mean, since it came out that the millage is the same for incorporated as it is unincorporated, because that's what was printed in the paper, then there could be services that the city's not getting, but only the county's getting, and the city shouldn't pay for those. It's, it's the opposite of what they're paying for what they're getting, or something that's countywide, everybody pays. If only the county's getting it, then the city shouldn't pay, so the millage has got to be lower.
And that is, you know, that is directly what the, you know, the Service Delivery Strategy statute say, in black and white, it said, you know, that the services are providing to the unincorporated residents only.
Right.
Must be borne by the unincorporated residents.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, we make it clear, though, they have, the unincorporated area does pay a special services additional millage rate on top of their 12.183 meals that they pay each year. I think it went up a little bit this year, whatever, just a little bit, but they do pay a little bit more than your city resident does, so.
We just have to be sure that.
And the question is whether or not they're paying.
That the numbers are right.
Their fair share of that cost.
Yeah.
And so, it's, everybody just needs to sharpen their pencils and take a look at it, and run the numbers, and see, you know, who should be paying for what, and making sure that whatever special tax district has been created, and what residents are paying in that special tax district is commensurate with the services they're getting, and that other residents in the city are not subsidizing that.
Right, right. Okay. I have some questions.
That's the only one.
Are you guys, I might, I might come up with one more.
All right.
We'll have a long one to meet.
I know. All right, so we have, we have these three meetings that we will need to approve the minutes, or if there's any changes. So I'll take a motion to summon back, or if you want to take them individually, we can do that.
I'm going to approve all three.
Okay, so a motion to approve all three?
Second.
Wes has second. Any further discussion on those meeting minutes? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, our next item is on the bid to frost the equipment for the mini excavator and trailer. We talked about that in our workshop, so you have the bid information in your packet, and Pete presented that to us at the workshop when we talked about that. Is there any?
No, this is the consent agenda. Yeah, can we approve that?
Yes, hello, I wouldn't, looking at that, we sure can. We can actually approve all of that if you'd like to, on the consent agenda, so we discussed all of them.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda, items six through ten. Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a second, all right, thank you, Frank. Any further discussion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote to approve all items in the consent agenda.
Aye.
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 All right, our next item is resolutions, and I guess we would need to take those separately, right? Jessica?
Yes, because both of these did not complete their stuff.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring it back to you all to see how you all want to deal with it. The first one is Little Pantry.
Okay.
We did receive the backgrounds, I have not yet got fingerprints on for their, for their owner or their manager. And Friendly Express, they have two different locations. Previously, at the council meeting, I stated they would have one of the same managers at Twentieth Street, and last week, when he sent it back to me, he had two new managers. So Friendly City, we have not, we've done the process for the owner or the CEO of that corporation, but we have not done anything, received anything in office for the manager, for either one of them.
Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion that we table resolutions eleven and twelve.
Can I ask a question? Will you tell him, make that?
And thirteen.
And thirteen, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What, hold up on the fingerprints, is because?
Are you talking about for the Little Pantry?
The only thing that's hold up is the fingerprints?
The owner did fingerprints, she registered wrong, and when it registered wrong, it doesn't come to us. We've notified her, told her she had to come back and resubmit, and she just has not came back yet.
So we have a motion to table items eleven, twelve, and thirteen until, I guess, until all the packet is complete.
Do you have to set a specific date, Rob, on this table?
Yeah, it is, I'm just trying to rack my brain. Generally, when these come up, you either approve them or you table them. When you table them, usually that then initiates a hearing on the, on the application.
But if the application's not complete?
I don't have the, that section in front of me, but that was my recollection. Those are your two options, if you table it, but I think you have to have.
What if you postpone it?
Well, I'd rather, maybe what, maybe what we do is remove those items from the agenda, and then bring those back up on the agenda at a later date.
Well, I mean, what, could you just make a motion to deny application until they're complete?
Till they're complete, yeah.
But then there may be a problem with when they can reapply.
It goes into that, yeah.
Do I?
They, if you deny it, then there may be a timeframe that, before they can reapply.
There is a timeframe?
And I don't think if we table it, it should be fine, because you're not tabling it because of issue, well, background issues is what I'm thinking.
Well, the clearest thing, the cleanest thing is just to amend the agenda, to remove these items from the agenda until they're complete.
I think that would probably be the best thing.
And that doesn't give them any restrictions if we deny it or table it, that they would have to abide by it because we deny or table it.
All right, so do we need to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to amend the agenda to remove a resolution from the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a motion to second? Any discussion that makes sense? Again, so we have a motion to second. I will call for the vote, since there seems to be no discussion. All those in favor of removing those items from the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jessica's back, is back in your board. Exactly. All right, carrying on with the agenda, our next item is, we have a couple of ordinances to consider. One was the annexation that Houston presented to us at the last council meeting, and that was for the one point nine six acres located on Highway eighty-two West. If you are ready to vote on that, I'll take a motion to either approve or not approve.
See, between, what, which parcel, which parcel?
I'll let Houston answer that.
I looked at the map, but I couldn't tell exactly. What's on both sides of it?
Pain tells on one side, right next to the pain.
Okay, is that all you know?
I'll move.
Okay, move for annexation.
Yes, second.
Okay, a motion second, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
None opposed? All right, the next item is an ordinance providing for moratorium of crematories. Rob, you want to talk about?
Yes, Council, you know, we have had this moratorium in place for a period of time, and we're asking that it be extended additional six months. Staff is still looking into various options as far as zoning, as well as trying to see whether or not there's anything out there from a scientific standpoint that might further educate us on what might be the best thing. So we're asking to extend that number six months.
Okay. All right, so I will take a motion.
So move.
Okay, to extend the, okay, for six months. All right, so we have motions or a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, none opposed, okay, thank you. On our other business, we have appointment of board members to the retirement board, and we talked about that at the workshop. Currently, the council, excuse me, currently the members are listed in your packet there. So we need to appoint a member to the retirement board, and then we also talked about creating a committee that would be more of the working aspect of the, of the group. So what's the pleasure of the council? What would y'all like to do? Don't all speak at once. I can't hear you when you do that.
Is this something we have to vote on, or is it just appointed by the, by the mayor?
Well, I think that the position is appointed by the mayor, but I think the creation of the committee, we would probably need to vote on. Would that be correct, Jessica?
You have the authority to appoint committees.
Okay. All right, well, why don't I appoint a committee? And I, what would this, I can't remember what.
I think what we were, I think what was envisioned was almost a technical committee.
Yeah.
You'd have the retirement board, which would be the mayor, and your designate, which currently is Captain Correll. And then I think that workshop, you mentioned a manhunt committee or.
What were we calling that committee? I can't remember what we called it.
I think it was a retirement technical committee or something like, but some of it, it's going to look kind of a bit for nuts and bows. And Richard comes to court.
Okay.
Basically, this committee would meet with Richard and Carl. Because currently, Carl's kind of meeting with Richard, not necessarily, kind of just the two of them, whoever. It'd be the city manager, Carl.
Not just whatever staff.
And whatever staff. So that's, that's the, looking at the investments, looking at what's happening, making.
Okay, recommendations, making, okay. What I'd like to do then with, with your, I know we don't have to vote on it, but certainly we'd like your input, was, would be, obviously, I would be there in this position, but also to keep Mr. Correll as the member of the board, and then appoint a committee of Jack and Wes, who would be more of the technical, working, hands-on aspect of the private. Mind with that? Does that sound acceptable? Again, Carlin, you good with that? Okay, if everybody's good with that, that's what we will do. Our next item on the agenda is approval for recommendation of the city manager search and recruitment. I thought you would have had that at the front of the agenda, but it's here at the end.
The, as we had discussed at the workshop, is, we did amend the job description some based on your input. And so we're, once you kind of give us the go-ahead with the process, then I believe the HR is ready to start advertising. And then we'll, we'll have a discussion item at your workshop in September preparatory to your October regular meeting. We'll give you status on how many applications we've gotten, we'll give you copies that you would need. Then you only need to be thinking about how, how, and then we can help try to structure some kind of mechanism to start putting that into management.
The information's in our packet, it's a, it's a very nice, nicely prepared document that would be sent to anyone who would be of interest to apply for the position. Any discussion? If everything looks good, I'll take a motion to approve this recommendation and the packet that's, the presentation that's in our council packet.
So move.
All right, a motion from Jack, is there a second?
Second.
Frank has made the second, thank you. Any further discussion, any other recommendations? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that carries. Our next item is our board report, and if you will look in your packet on page one thirty-six, we actually have two vacancies in historic preservation. Mark Sam Middleton has, she's moved out of the historic district, which is not a requirement to be on the HPC, but has served for a long time, and I think wanted to take a break. And then unfortunately, we had the passing of Mr. Bridgen, who was a board member who had served and done a wonderful job, and became very ill, and unfortunately passed away, so we do have those two openings. We also have a vacancy on Keith Tiff Bucel with the resignation of Elaine Hook, and you can see there are the board applications that we have on file, and we need to add, under historic preservation, we also have an application for Jeff Robbins, who was a former member who did an excellent job there. So that being said, we would like to go ahead and take any HPC applications or appointments to that board.
I move that we appoint Jeff Robbins and Brooke Sanders to the HPC board.
Thank you, and the, and I have Jeff's application right here, if you need to review that. So we have a motion for those two, for Brooke and for Jeff. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Jeff has served on the board before, so he's a very good candidate.
He'll be a good, good person coming back on, he's gone through the training, and does a good job.
And Brooke has worked with the Chamber of Commerce, and she's served for many of those.
Exactly, so I think they'll, they'll both be nice assets, nice additions to the board that Houston works with. All right, that being said, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do I need to disclose, Rob, that Brooke is my daughter-in-law?
You just did.
I just did, so.
Thank you, did.
Rather err on the, on the side of the right side, so I voted for her, so we, we good?
We're good.
Okay. I think that is everything for our agenda, unless there's any other items to come before the council. I do know that we have planned for an executive session, so there's no other items to come before the council. I will adjourn this meeting, and we'll take a motion to go into executive session. Will we have anything that we'll need to report back to Latasha on? Latasha, we should be good, so if there's, we can certainly call you.
Okay.
So I'll take a motion to go into executive session.
So move for legal matters.
For legal matters.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll go into executive session.